Hello everyone and welcome to another channel seven eight one news wall Sam city council debrief. This week in the city council, uh there was a discussion of Uma Flowers. Application to open a cannabis dispensary in Waltham. Counselor has introduced two resolutions, one having to do with dog parks and one having to do with. And um we will talk about all of those issues. I'm here with James Krikellis. And Chris Gamble. And also, uh this past week, the city of Waltham announced that June twenty fifth is the date. That Wall Sam's single use plastic bag ban will give you two. So we have. Uh additional guests, a special guest here to talk to us tonight, and that's Michael Cavalo. Hi, Michael.
Hello, glad to join you.
Thanks. And actually, we're going to talk about the big things first, because um we think that's a really interesting thing. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris. Can you give us a little background, Chris?
Definitely. Um so this is exciting for me, because this is some, one of the first things I ever worked on in Waltham. Uh from a community organizing uh aspect was with Michael. Was it more than four years ago? Was that four years ago? Put, yeah, putting together a ban on plastic bags. And so I'm excited to have this conversation, but I'll let uh Michael you do talking. Can you give us an overview about what this legislation actually does?
Sure. Uh one of what this legislation does is say you can't use. Single use plastic bags anymore. Uh this follows on the footsteps of a number of other Massachusetts communities. Uh so that uh stores would have to instead provide uh recyclable paper bags. Or you could bring in your own cloth and canvas bags. Uh what it does is it cuts down on carbon emissions, because plastic bags are from petrochemicals. Uh and it also prevents certain waste problems with plastic getting into the environment, particularly the marine environment. So uh it does a lot of good for the for the earth.
I remember the first public hearing that we had for that. Um it was. I think Nick Hammond spoke on it. I spoke on it. And then there were a couple of partners from the Sierra Club that spoke on it. That was. Years ago. That was three years ago, um which is crazy to think about. Um. So that leads into my next question, which is, you know, this grew from four years of activism and pushing the city council. And should be regarded as a victory. Do you want to talk a little bit about um, you know, the history of the campaign to ban plastic bags in Waltham?
Sure, it's it's a big victory. It is, it is um very unfortunate. It took so long. One of the reasons is that we had a real advocate in the ordinance committee, Robert Logan, who then was defeated for reelection. And so we didn't have somebody really pushing it in ordinances. Uh another problem was that even after the city council supported it unanimously. Uh like all ordinances, it went to the legal department. And then it sat in legal forever. Uh and with with no way to pry it out of there. You would have uh needed a lot of work by the city council to get it out. We kept putting pressure on the city council and finally they got it out of legal. And and one of the reasons it was able to stay in there so long is, of course, COVID happened and froze activity and a lot of important issues. Um but finally got it out of legal and then the city council amended. Which meant that it acted legal. Fortunately, it didn't stay a whole other year there. Uh but the city council made two uh well, made a couple of changes. Uh which delayed things, but also made the bill a little bit worse. Still a very good bill and and we're still really happy it got through. Um when the city council um. Tried to amend it the first time, you know, before it went to legal for a year, they tried to carve out an exemption for restaurants. And we were able to defeat that by going into the ordinance committee hearings and um letting them know that that would exempt. You know, some very large providers of plastic bags and really nullify a lot of the good of it. Um this time when they, and we won, we won that, we got that overturned unanimously. Um but this time, when they tried to amend it this other way, one was by postponing it uh. Uh the six month delay and also by allowing these so-called. Uh biodegradable bags, plastic bags, which industry contends are biodegradable, but most scientists say isn't the case. We decided not to fight that, because we really wanted to get most of it through immediately and that it wasn't worth fighting that particular battle. Um but, you know, we had provided to the city council information on why that wasn't a good solution. And they didn't really deal with the issues. They just said, well, some people say that this, that these these biodegradable bags aren't really biodegradable. But we're going to do this anyway. And so it was it was sort of that level of thought.
Can you talk about the the tactics that were used for the campaign over these four years? Like, how did you? Make this successful? Because, you know, we can do, we can want to do anything, but it actually takes organizing to get things done. Can you talk a little bit about that?
The main tactic we used was trying to get our membership to write. Um emails to the various city councillors. Um and that, you know, certainly has an effect. Um. The other thing we did was coalition with other groups. So Mothers Out Front was very good on this issue. And as you mentioned, the Sierra Club got involved too, which was also very good. Uh what happens, though, is when it takes so long, you know, if if if. If progressive measures get opposed outright, then you can build up, you can build up a campaign. But what, when they slow walk it, then it becomes really problematic. It's a really good tactic uh for for the bad team. Of uh saying, we're not opposing this, we're we're in favor, but then it just never happens. And so what we we did was, you know, we 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 get these email campaigns going, we would get these alliances going. Um and then you just have to be very patient and persistent and not get discouraged. Because it's very easy to get discouraged when it's slow up, you're putting in effort and nothing's happening and nothing's happening and nothing's happening. So uh it was really great when we got it done, the last council meeting of the old council.
I'm very happy to see it done. I mean, it took four years. This is a very popular piece of legislation. So there's so much precedent set. I don't understand why the law department had to sit in it for so long. That's that's for a different discussion. Um is there anything you would have done differently to make this process quicker? Um any lessons learned about organizing in Waltham?
I guess, um if I, you know, if I if I had a time machine to go back. Then I would have realized just how much they could delay. That that was not something that ever occurred to me. And I guess I would have been more impatient. Uh and rather than, you know, assuming goodwill and assuming, okay, it got passed. Why, why wouldn't it go through? Uh I guess we would have pushed her to get it out legal quicker rather than thinking, oh, it's moving along as it should. So that was sort of a mistake. If we, if I knew better, uh how long they can get out, uh it would have been more efficient. Um and and you do, you do, at least we we kept at it, the persistence work. It was hard to be persistent, because you do get discouraged when nothing happens.
Yeah, you talk about um, you talked about Robert Logan and um him and I had our differences, but. Uh the most important thing anyone's ever taught me about the Waltham City Council was Robert Logan. And he said that nothing passes in the Waltham City Council unless it's done through overwhelming public pressure. And uh that's, and that's something I will remember forever. Um so uh is there anything we can and other environmental groups in Waltham working on right now? That you want to share? And also, can you tell us about we can, uh because we never actually got to that introduction?
Okay, sure. Uh we can with both a uh. The uh climate group of progressive Waltham. And also the Waltham group of three fifty mass. Uh and so we work on statewide environmental issues with three fifty mass. Um I became chair, you know, around the time we started working on the plastic bag ban. Um we're mostly volunteers. We have about a hundred and thirty people, but it's um. You know, we only have a few that really do a lot of the work and we'd like to push that up. So if any of the listeners would like to join in. Uh we we can really use help. Uh the more people that are pushing on climate issues, the more success we'll have. And so in terms of other issues, um we had another couple of successes besides. Uh the plastic bag ban, we had uh community electricity aggregation passed. Which give the city bargains on behalf of all the households. And so. Instead of getting a take it or leave it from the electric utility, we get a much better rate. Uh and we get ten percent more renewables than in than previously than in the state mandated amount. With also the option for people like me to uh choose a hundred percent renewables at a higher price. People that are willing to prioritize renewables instead of price uh could go to a hundred percent or fifty percent renewables. But even the people that wanted to take the basic deal, um not only would get ten percent more renewables, but they'd also get this. Uh much lower price and also have it last for longer. So instead of having prices jumping up with what's going on with Russian oil. Um they're locked in. So that was another success. Another success was getting wealth and to hire a person with sustainability responsibilities. But in terms of looking forward, we we'd like to get a pilot program on uh composting. Uh Jonathan Paz, you mentioned earlier, has some great proposals on improving uh mass transit. So, for example, bus shelters. Um that's also uh and uh a class income issue, you know, people that. Don't uh either can't afford or don't choose to have cars. Um you know, having conditions much better for them when they're waiting for the bus and particularly later in the winter. Um. So that's good. And also looking forward to uh tree protection ordinances. We'd also like to get more electrical vehicles and more support for that, both in terms of uh. City-owned vehicles being electric and also in terms of charging stations for people that uh choose to buy electric vehicles.
And you guys are coming to the library uh with mothers out front soon, aren't you?
That's right. We're going to be speaking. Uh it's a, there's an Earth Day theme. We'll we'll be speaking Sierra Club and Mothers Out Front. So that's very exciting.
Definitely. I was telling the guys that you were uh, it's like you're doing a press tour right now.
Yeah.
Um and so what are some other things Waltham could be doing to mitigate the effects of climate change? Just a wish list.
Well, I mean, there's a lot that you can do in terms of improving um insulation. Improving lighting with LED lights. Uh so what you want to do is both energy efficiency. And using uh more renewables and. In terms of renewables, you can do things like uh community LEDs or or you can do more with rooftop solar.
Well, that's wonderful. Well, uh thank you for coming, Michael. Um I think uh your work in weekend is awesome. I think. That, you know, four years is a long time, good to pass, and I'm glad that we're finally. Having a meeting where we're celebrating instead of talking about it more. Um but again, thank you for coming.
Yeah, a pleasure to be here and thanks for doing the show. Uh I really think it's great to have a group talking about what the council does and doesn't do. Keep the focus on it. So good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael. That's a pretty big accomplishment and uh it's exciting to hear about what that group has planned, given the track record. And I also wanted to give a shout out to our good friend Nick Hammond, who is also very involved in this effort and weekend, but he wasn't able to. To join us today. We'll talk about our next issue, which is the two two resolutions um that Counselor Paz submitted. One has to do with dog parks, and I don't remember who we said was going to talk about this, so I'm going to try Ja- James, Chris.
I can do it. Yep. There were two resolutions that came out of the city council. Um now we're both late file. We were, we went in thinking that there was going to be none. Um so the first one was dog parks. Um Counselor Paz, he uh. He wants to pilot um. Dog, a, the idea of a dog park at three different locations, um with the hopes of uh just putting it anywhere. Um but right now, he's going to look at McKenna, uh Chemistry and Nipper Mar Park. Um. Those are all relatively center of the city. Um and uh so, I mean, you know. Uh I don't know the history of dog parks in Waltham. I, you know, there's the, there's the one on the north side. Um but I think having one centrally located would be great. Um so this goes to committee. We will see. I honestly, on those three that were listed, McKenna, Chemistry and Nipper Mar, I really. Don't can't see how it's going to work there, but it could lead to something. I'm excited about that. I'm happy. Let's have a dog park in Waltham that is more centrally located. I'll say that instead of having uh to go to the um to the old high school.
Anything to add, James?
I will say I live kind of close to Chemistry and there's a lot of people on the south side with dogs watching them all the time and I can imagine people probably want to use it.
Thanks. And so the uh second uh resolution had to do with housing and uh who wants to explain that one?
Well, I can take it.
Okay, go for it, James.
This was also a late file and it was, we were just talking in the last uh meeting about how. The needs of like homeowners and and such tend to get centered in these meetings. And this was interesting, because it also tend was a. Resolution that meant brought up tenants. Uh the exact wording of it was um, they're with me here. Uh the the beautiful result was that the uh Waltham City Council explores all ways to more formally assist tenants, homeowners and landlords. And that went to economic and community development. Uh. It's hard for me to see what exactly is going to be the action taken from this, but it sounds like it's going to be mostly discussion and. The previous action the city has done on things like this during COVID were uh rental assistance, which was just. Pay out to the landlords to keep people in. So. That's kind of about what I'd be expecting at the at the high end.
Yeah, I'm I'm curious, curious what happens. The therefore be resolved, which is like the action step, is incredibly vague. And generally, you want something more concrete. I don't know if um Counselor Paz uh or any of the other people that signed on. Have something in mind that they just want to flesh out more in committee, or if they're literally just want to start a conversation. Um but uh Hannah Beva from Watch, uh which is a great organization, was also there. So I assume she's working on this. Um and if anything she works on, I I enjoy. Um so I am very curious to see where this goes. It is in economic and community development, so it's un, uh so we'll go unrecorded, but we'll record it ourselves and put it online. Um and, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic. These things you talked about all the time and nothing happens, but I would like to see something happen.
Uh yeah, so um when he introduced it, he made comments where he talked about um the high price of. Housing um in Waltham and how that affects different groups of people. And that's great, because we've been complaining about how no one ever talks about that and he did it. Um based on those comments that he made when he was uh introducing it, do we have any speculation on the kind of action? He might be hoping to see?
I mean, Paz has always been a champion of tenants and I think for him to put something together that says tenants, owners and landlords. I'm not sure how much this is supposed to help landlords, but we'll see. He's also a people pleaser.
The uh some of the sign-ons for it were uh Darcy, O'Brien and Dunn as well. And I mean the. It's kind of a a broad array of people and they. I would be inclined to expect some kind of like rental system, assistance payout, being the way that this is structured. Um just because it's a little, it's more, it's not very threatening to the existing structures and make sure that landlords get paid. But keeps people in place at least.
Yeah, people like O'Brien and Dunn, they will make sure that uh maybe that's why they're there, to make sure that the landlords get included.
Okay, wait. And also, you mentioned, Chris, that there was something um unusual that happened. And he introduced one of the resolutions with Counselor Kate, right?
Well, it was just strange going back to the first resolution, uh because they they say the whole resolution, the whole rigmarole, and then they say. Uh signed and then all of the people, and this one was only Paz. And he says, oh, I think one other councillor did. And then there was just like crickets in the room and then all you hear is Counselor Case and what's seven. You're like, uh no, I'm not ready to sign on to that. And so it's just interesting to me, because sometimes councillors will not share a resolution. So only their name is put onto it. And then some, and then most of the time they put it out to all of the councillors, so anyone can sign on. So when someone puts out uh a resolution that only has their name on it. Ninety-nine times out of ten, maybe not, maybe that's a little uh hyper uh hyperbole, but generally. It's because they didn't want anyone else to sign on, because they wanted to be, you know, about them, um which is, you know, there's pros and cons to that. Um. And this one in particular, by Paz saying that, it makes it seem like he did put it out to anyone, everyone, and no one else wanted to sign on. So it's like, it's just a weird moment in the uh city council.
It could also be because it was a late file, that there was like a few people signing on. Because a lot of these late files, you'll see people just signing on as they're reading it in the room.
Yes, yeah, we have seen a good point, James. Literally on the fly, be like, I will sign on to this. Um so yeah, it was a late file done after Thursday, um before Monday for.
Okay, so uh the vast majority of last night's meeting was taken up. By the discussion of Uma Flowers' uh application for a special permit to open a dispensary in. Uh Waltham, that would be both um uh medical as well as an adult use dispensary. Um they had a public hearing as part of last night's meeting and they already had a public hearing over a year ago. That was the first step in getting their special permit. And the reason they requested a new hearing is because since then, the membership of the council have changed. Um we've added two new councillors, so uh they wanted to do their presentation for them. And um so it was a long conversation, about a hundred minutes. A lot of it was going over what Uma's planning to do. Uh with their shop, and I'm not going to summarize that, because that we've, we've discussed it before. And actually. Um one of the people who spoke last night was our good friend Emily Superior. So I want to give her a shout out. She's one of the people who has helped me. Keep up to date on this issue. And we made a video uh where we went up to uh Uma Flowers' current location in Pepperell. So if you're interested in this issue, but you've never been to a dispensary and you're having trouble envisioning how they work, you can check out that video. On uh the Waltham Data YouTube channel or on Grouches of Waltham. Um so last night, uh it was interesting, because their stated reason for being there was for the two new councillors to get the presentation. So that kind of put the attention on our two new councillors, uh Bradley McCarthy and Kate's. And in particular, it was the first time we've really heard um Counselor Bradley MacArthur uh speak for a significant amount of time in the council. And I thought she did a really, she came across really well. She did not seem nervous at all. She did not rush through her questions. She did seem like she had always been sitting in that seat, so I wanted to mention that. This was another opportunity for the councillors to ask questions and those to ask most of the questions, both Counselor LaFoussie and Counselor. Um LeBlanc asked questions that they were very negative, but they both sort of brought up the fact that there's residential nearby. This location, which sort of implying they might have an issue with that. Counselor Bradley McCarthy did a a really interesting thing with her questions. I think she wanted to be supportive. And so what she did was she asked some questions that gave the applicant, uh the petitioners. Um opportunities to say some positive things about their business. One of her questions to the petitioners was. Um, you know, what has been your experience uh as women entrepreneurs in this industry, which is very heavily male dominated? And and they had an interesting answer for that. So I appreciate that. She brought that up, because, you know, she didn't bring, she didn't rock the boat in terms of trying to. Change the process, but she did rock the boat in terms of bringing up some things that don't usually get brought up. Um so Counselor Kate's also asked a lot of questions. He asked some very pointed, critical kind of questions. So that at first, it almost seems like he he was looking for a reason to be against it. Um but as it went on, it it became more clear that he was just, he's not against it. He's was just being very detail oriented in terms of. Bringing up every possible concern his his constituents might have. So, for example. He asked them, are you going to sell edibles? And how are we going to make sure that doesn't up, end up in the candy food stream? And um so the uh lawyer explained that um. It's actually illegal to make edibles that look too much like candy. It's illegal to package them in a way that looks like candy. And then Kate's asked, well, but here's the thing, uh most medicine tastes bitter. So if a kid accidentally eats it, they know it's something they're not supposed to eat, but this is something that tastes sweet. And the lawyer pointed out that if somebody's um. Uh being treated for cancer and they've lost their appetite and they need to use cannabis to get their appetite back, they need to eat something appetizing. They can't, you can't make it gross. So it was those type of questions where it was uh things that maybe to people who are more familiar with legal cannabis. Did uh weren't that interesting, but would be interesting to people who have questions about this. And uh so as far as I can tell, uh this hearing had no effect on the process. So when uh Uma Flowers and the other four to five applicants submitted their applications, each of them submitted a traffic study. And um the, all of those uh applications are now in front of the Rules and Ordinances Committee. Which has asked the city to perform another traffic study. And that's what everybody's waiting on. Uma can't do anything uh to speed that up. And it doesn't appear that this hearing did anything to speed that up. But that raises the question of what was their intention with this hearing? Was it really, did they really expect that two new councillors would somehow change the process? And I think maybe uh Uma's lawyer was hoping that they would make such a good impression that the council, in fact, would say, we're going to go ahead and grant. This permit um without waiting for that traffic study. And this came up when Counselor Darcy questioned them. He is the head of the Rules and Ordinances Committee. And um he asked kind of an odd question. He asked the lawyer, um when that new traffic study comes out, are you going to consider it? But they're not the ones who are making a decision. It's the council making a decision. So it wasn't clear what he meant that, are you going to consider it? Um but the lawyer said, oh, yeah, of course we'll consider it. And then Darcy said, it um, the reason we asked to do that. And this is important, because I've been speculating about it for a long time. Darcy says the reason that they um wanted to do the traffic study. Was because the traffic studies they got from each of the applicants were very inconsistent and made very different predictions about the traffic. Um so that's why they want to do the additional one to understand those discrepancies. And he said it in a maybe slightly defensive way, like he was picking up that the lawyer wanted to um. Challenge that. Um the lawyer did not directly push back on the traffic study at all, but he made a comment. Um that he has a secret fantasy uh that they will uh approve him without the traffic. So that was his way of raising it without appearing to be criticizing the council's process. Um so it was interesting in a lot of ways. Um if uh you're not familiar with what's going on, I suggest watching it. Um but for those people who have been following the story, unfortunately, I don't think this meeting had any effect on the process. Um everybody's just still waiting on that traffic study. Um Chris, did you have any other thoughts on that?
Uh my only thought is that I'm like so bored of talking about this. Um it's because. You know, Waltham said yes to recreational uh weed, which I guess we're calling adult use now, which is fine, I'll start calling it adult use. Um in two thousand and sixteen, like. That is a extraordinarily long time. Took us four years to ban plastic bags. It's taking us eight years to figure out how to set up. A weed shop. And then, you know, there are other cities that are just raking in dough, um talk about legality. Um and, you know, I'm just, this, I learned almost nothing new from this public hearing. It's, was it just a general? Hearing, just like the last time they were here. And I was just, I'm just, I just want to just be done with it.
Yeah, I I find this an interesting issue, but I, but I still felt like this was an extremely long meeting to not accomplish that much. Other than here, getting to hear Colleen talk, which was good. James, did you have that?
I I thought it was really funny when Randy was asking how long it takes edibles to take effect. And also like the whole, like. Bringing up like, you know, edibles being sweet or whatever is kind of funny too, just because like, there's plenty of alcohol that is like flavored or like sweet or whatever. You know, it's very much a double standard, like people mentally have, I guess, like between like all the different drugs that are legal and stuff. But yeah, Randy, you can also just go, dig into the store to ask and stuff like this too.
Yeah, if um I I totally forgot, I should have mentioned that that legendary moment where Randy was like the at-large city. The most popular at-large city councillor asked, uh how long does it take edibles? If you could, if you could include that clip on this video, that would be amazing.
If if somebody comes in and purchases edibles um and was to take one. What is the timeline of a, let's say they took one and they were driving? What is the timeline of effects that the it takes place on?
Um, why do you think he asked that? Because he's never eaten an edible in his life, I assume?
The context of the question, I think, was like, uh if, say, someone's hypothetically buys a bunch of edibles and eats them all in the parking a lot. Will that interfere with them getting home? And it's like, you can do this is the exact same thing in a liquor store. So.
Yeah, and um. Yeah, and, you know, the lawyer basically, to, he responded really well to a lot of those kinds of questions by making analogies like James just made about, we'll compare this how to a liquor store, compare this to other types of retail businesses. And in fact, he made the point several times that cannabis dispensaries attract less traffic than other types of retail businesses, and he went into detail about why that is with pre-orders and stuff. And so this whole issue of the traffic study, do you need one of them, do you need two of them? It still begs the question of, why are you treating a pot shop any differently than another business in, in terms of traffic? He also mentioned that as part of this process, they had met with the city's traffic engineer, made changes to their plans, and then he said, "I'm totally okay with this," at least according to Uma's lawyer. He said he was totally okay with it. So this process is of waiting for this traffic study is on top of already having the traffic engineer's approval. So I thought the, the lawyer did a great job of addressing a lot of the concerns. He also addressed what you just said, Chris, about why are we calling it adult use instead of recreational? He pointed out there are a lot of people who want to use cannabis medicinally, but for one reason or another, they don't want to get a medical card, because that puts them in a database of cannabis users, and some people have federal jobs, and that's still illegal under federal law. So that's why they say adult use, because not everyone who's coming in that way is using it recreationally. So I think that's, that's all on the, on the pot shops that have been discussed for a very long time. Any additional comments? Now. So thank you very much. I'm really glad we had Michael on, because that's a real, that was a really helpful story of a success story of organizing in Wall Fam. And tell all your friends to watch this episode, so they can do the same thing with their organizing. And we will be back next week with the city council committee meetings. Thank you very much.
Bye, everyone.